At this time, we're going to call the regular meeting of the Osceola School District for Wednesday, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three to border with a roll call vote. Jan here, Wyatt.
Here.
Brooke here, Kai'Sa here, Jeff and I are here. This public meeting of the Osceola Board of Education is for the purpose of conducting the school this, school district's business and is not considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. Public comment will be recognized during the public comment portion of the meeting after acknowledgement by the board chair. When called to speak, approach the podium and state your first and last name and your topic. All remarks should be addressed to the whole board, not any one specific person. Each comment will be allowed for up to five minutes. During the public comment portion, the board and administration listen but may choose not to respond to public comment. We ask speakers and audience members to conduct themselves in a professional manner which includes no waving or hand gesturing, no vocal interference with speaker during their time to address the school board, no disruption or incitement to disrupt influence impair speaker's ability to deliver their comments, no taunting ridicule or other deliberate demonstrative behavior directed at others or their views. Use appropriate language, tone and gestures while speaking. Failure to comply with these requests may result in you being asked to leave the meeting. Persons who request of the audience of the board, we have none tonight. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Are there any items board wishes to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, the chair calls for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There's been a motion by Jeff, is there a second? Second by Jan, any discussion?
I think it's not necessarily a discussion, but just would like to follow up. That's the more reminded place I'll go through to help out our special education department from the middle school. What do you have another question?
All those in favor to approve the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to consent the agenda. Next on the agenda is the approval of the retirement of Eric Bergman, seventh grade teacher.
Twenty-six years Eric Bergman in the middle school teaching social studies. In the wonderful veterans program he puts on, wish him the best and congratulations.
And he also does a lot for extracurricular activities, so.
He, I think, is one of those special places in the middle school that makes it every day better for kids. I know when he told me this fall that he was planning to retire, I said, who am I gonna bother about the state of Nebraska? Because he does not like the state of Nebraska and it compelled my children to go to Nebraska. So what a unique working thing that is so Mr. Bergman. So I so appreciated him, but I'm a very believer of when Eric retires, I'll enjoy his retirement. But I know there's gonna be a lot of sad faces, adults and kids at the middle school of what he has done, so.
And until we update our phone system, we can always hear as well.
I think about Eric, he will connect to every kid. Not every adult. It's not true. I just have a lot of respect for him.
So is there a motion to approve the retirement of Eric Bergman?
I will take that.
There's been a motion by Brooke, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is the school board committee report with a state convention review. So first you on.
Sure, I think this was my fourth convention to attend. It's always an amazing opportunity to collaborate with other school boards, to get some powerful professional development. I always enjoy the time, I enjoy the laughs, the joke telling, the camaraderie that comes from the team building as well. Always a proud moment of mine is when we get to see our Osceola art students, arts on display. It's, you know, there's four hundred and twenty-one districts in the state. And of that, there's twenty pieces of art, of which we had three of them. To me, that's just so powerful and amazing. Because when you get a group of adults together and there's very little students, while we're all there thinking and working and learning for our students, when the band comes in, it's powerful. With the artwork in it, it's powerful because it reminds us why we're there. And so I just, to me, that's always one of my favorite moments. And then the networking that occurs is also amazing. Last year's where I met the superintendent of Madison School District. That's how I got invited to speak at the Capitol. And I saw him right before the opening keynote speaker. He remembered my son by name, what are we doing in Osceola, lovely to see you, gave me a hug. Three minutes into his opening address, he says, public education matters to the people of Madison, all the way up to Osceola. From here to, and we were the only small town listed in this stuff, networking and connecting with those other powerful educational leaders that means so much that we can bring it back here and make a difference for our kids. A good convention again, I look forward to going again in the future and I'm glad to take over that opportunity to go.
Can I say anything on that?
You took the words right out of my mouth.
I know.
Okay. I'm just so thankful, I look forward to the convention. I, it is not just a vacation for a week. There's so much information, so many sessions to choose from. Mark, or going off your, the one speaker that was talking about, you know, all the way up to Osceola. His quote was, that kids shouldn't be punished by their zip codes. And that really stuck out to me and I like just the camaraderie there, that you're all there for the same purpose, the same goals. You know, the first year I went was when it was virtual, which was very helpful to have the sessions, but so much more important connecting with different districts after the sessions. You know, I got into a great discussion, I'd like to follow up with the board sometime about substitute teacher pay. Just some other ideas that I think we haven't looked at yet that might help us bring in some of the quality staff and help our everyday teachers out. I also went to a session on board norms. Since we're not having, not in a place to hire someone to come in. I got some really good information on how we might go about doing that. And again, I think it's all really important of it, but something that we can bring back directly to us. It was pretty awesome. I think that's all, but we didn't name my car yet.
That's on you.
That's on you.
So it was my first year going and it was very great to have the opportunity to network with the other board members. In one session, after the session, there was a bunch of us that were sitting down and it's great to hear that boards have challenges, that all the boards have challenges. And one of the things that strikes me is how hard, when you get that email, how hard it is to reply to an email and that's normal because you wanna do the right thing and say the right thing. And I did also go to effective boardmanship and the use of norms and really focusing on the policies and procedures and that was really good. One recommendation mark they had was that if we're out in the community and somebody comes to us, we should have your card, business card to hand to them to contact you. Something that we need to forward on.
It's so easy. But you have to hear somebody actually say that, you're like, oh.
Exactly, yeah. And then I went to a few underfunding that I talked a little bit about where they use their, they do their self-insured and then they use their savings from that to reinforce staff wages and hiring new staff. And one of the things that a lot of districts are using is the use of like minute clinics, like form a consortium with other schools and then hold a minute clinic right on site to save cost of hospital claims. So it was pretty interesting, so overall the time, a lot busier than I thought it would be because you're going all day long, so it was good, thanks for that opportunity. Mark?
Yeah, I can go and see that a lot of the conversations and things we do too are about balls, buses and beans. There were a lot of conversations with other school districts and superintendents about all of those, along with the vendors as well that are there. So making those connections with past vendors, but also looking at future vendors as possibilities as well. A lot of collaboration and communication going on too, whether in sessions or out of sessions. And I can tell you that the, at least in the networking that I ran through, the big concern is the funding that is coming from the state. And that is from Madison to Milwaukee to Osceola to Crevets down to Junction City down in southern Wisconsin. Everyone is very concerned about what is going to happen to public education. I heard it from many superintendents, many board members and other friends and vendors as well. Also, if you remember Scott Brauski from Point of Beginning, who did our athletic field, he did shoot the largest buck of his career this year, nine class deer, so. But yes, you're right.
I wasn't there for that.
It is a lot more than what people would anticipate being going to that. But the camaraderie and getting to know and understand people outside of the business world is really important too. Because you could, you have somebody else that you can bounce things off of. I talked to superintendents that I don't, I only see when I'm there and they talk to them when they're there, including Rick, who was the person that identified the Wisconsin Singers for us last year.
That was fun.
So a great opportunity and I actually wish they moved into the Wisconsin Dells, but.
I did write this up for the literacy.
Thanks. Was it, don't drink.
It's kinda neat to see Wyatt and Emma right. Because last year the conference is when someone was going to a session and really talked about, and move, like, let's move forward with getting student reps at the table. And it took us some time, but we did it, so I'm curious to see what we'll move forward from this convention.
I do, actually I have slides.
More.
No, I just wanted to share, actually Kai'Sa and I went to a session put on by the Association for Equity and Funding, or ADF, which was really powerful and we won't just sat there going, wow.
Maybe that's where they talked.
And the session was called New Studies Show Funding Impacts on Students in Districts. And so I'm gonna have April open up the revenue limit history one. They had thirty slides for every year from nineteen ninety-three, ninety-four to last year, but I'm just gonna show you the first and the last. So this was back in ninety-three, ninety-four, how districts were, it was really spread out and there was a good variation of what districts were receiving per member under the revenue limit. So that has changed over time, it's a nice variation. So now we're gonna jump to the next slide, which is, I believe, twenty-one, twenty-two, and you will see what happened. We're all stuck, we, I'm saying we because that's where Osceola is, we're all stuck at the ten thousand and that's the minimum, and then there's a few districts that are spread out forward to that. And you can see there are our districts receiving fifteen thousand dollars per member or more, when we're at ten thousand dollars per member. If you could imagine that we were at twelve thousand per member, that would be over three million dollars more in revenue for the school district of Osceola this year. So it could have eliminated the need to go to operating referendum. It would just be built into the formula, is really how it would be. So, you know, we both just went, whoa. And that's how the inequities have really, this, I think, really shows the inequities that are happening, especially when you look at districts that are getting fifty percent more than we are per member, so. And then the next, the other piece that I put out there is kind of more of a map. If you can zoom in on just the colorful map is what I was trying to capture. So we are, I'm sure somebody close to the map can figure out which one, can figure out where's Osceola's.
The orange?
Yeah, we're right above the green and the yellow, or the red right above that. Because the orange is Sacred Falls. Yeah, we're below. So we're the red right below that. Okay, so all the red are those districts that are receiving funding of ten thousand per member or less. And so just right, you know, neighboring district just to the south of us is ten-five to eleven and Hudson School District is the light green and they're in between eleven-five and twelve thousand. So right around us. It has an impact, it has an impact. And, and I'm not gonna get into all the other things. Share all kinds of data points as to how that affects then teacher ratio, teacher to student ratios, you know, your higher level, your more experienced teachers, how many you have in your district based on, kind of making it bear sense. So it was, it was really eye-opening for us, so I just thought I'd share a couple visuals with you on that. I did have a superintendent of a neighboring smaller district ask about our process going self-funded. So Osceola will have an opportunity to sort of be a leader and perhaps assist another neighboring district to kind of be in that process. So yay, people are really interested in how we make that transition. And as all of us here at the table, we're also interested to see how this year shakes out as the first year, so. So that was good. And then, you know, I just really enjoyed walking through the exhibit hall with the board, for the board members because it was fun for me to say, hey, that's what we use for and this is what we use for and kind of, you know, make those connections, so I really enjoyed that as well, so thank you. I think a really cool moment too that I forgot to highlight was we were out for dinner and we got word that there was a building burning on Main Street, right? And all these neighboring districts were coming over and saying, is everything okay? I heard that there's a building, you know, just concerned. And all of us are going, yeah, uh, yeah, sure. Like, none of us knew at that point what was going on. And it just reminds you that we're, we're a small town, but we're really all, like, in the state together, so. Pretty impactful, so. Yeah, me too, so thank you.
We're gonna move on to the next agenda item, review twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar.
First, we had a draft calendar here, put together similar to other calendars we've had in the past. Did send out a form and put to all district staff asking for some feedback, some minor tweaks within the calendar. A variety of things that are important when we are talking about the school calendar is, remember the school calendar is meant to be a balance for students, staff, community families, and obviously most important is education for kids. But balancing all of those out and then the requirements that we are under for the number of hours of instruction that we are required to have by grade levels and then based on the number of days that we have for contracted days for our teaching staff. Just a few minor tweaks within the calendar that all can be adjusted as per board recommendations. I also am, you know, I sent out today both the draft and the calendar that went out with the survey and then also the calendar draft that was here. Couple of pieces to keep in mind is we do have built-in increment weather days in our calendar. We can, based on our start times and end times and the number of days that we have, we can go as low as a hundred and sixty-nine days. However, that would be right at the hours of instruction required. So if there's anything else, we would need to look at making up those days. So it's super tight within that. Those days would need to be between, starting in September, as the interim days would not count towards that. Sometimes I think that when people are looking at the calendar as well, put a vacation, put, you know, more break in here for a day here, for time off, whatever. But if you put the day in that's not a student day, then it's also a lost day for the teacher contract requirement of a hundred and eighty-nine days. So it's like, if you take a vacation day, then where do you add the additional day in for teachers to work? Really, if we wanted to look at additional breaks within the calendar, really what would mean would be that we would extend our school year that first weekend of June. But the calendar proposed as it is right now has ample days in it for the hours of instruction. We're at a hundred and seventy-two point five, so we could actually reduce by three and a half days to still leave the hours of instruction and have four incremental weather days. What other questions do you have on the calendar?
I, I just noticed there's a bunch of these with no break from January third to February twenty-sixth and I wonder if, that just seems like a long time, but.
Right, the initial calendar, Kai'Sa, for January did have January sixteenth as a teacher in-service day. But it was recommended that would really be nice to have the in-service day at January second. So there is one of the reasons why you would look at having a longer time period in between. We can obviously add in an additional day, which would mean we would add a student day in the energy.
I really like the change from the first draft to the second draft because I like getting done before we roll into June. I know when, I'm assuming, or what you guys have told me is when you start building this calendar, you actually start kind of backwards because it's filling in the summer schools. Hopefully, we don't go into July and then kind of working our way and filling our dates then. So the way that this one times out was beautiful to me as far as start and end and all of that. The only thing I had heard from some staff, and I don't know if they put this on the, on the survey or not, was possibly having some break, like, at the end of February. And I think that's the end of the hex or the tri, something that in-service day.
Yeah, feedback on for that actually has an impact on the ACT test or the ASPIRE test.
Sure.
I had a question, so because Oscar Bowl events and some days for like, well, this week are homecoming and requires you to take a day off, how would that affect the calendar? How would that affect the amount of days that's, the hours needed for school taking, like, um, not quite following.
Or instructional time maybe?
Yeah, something like that.
So like, are you talking about you as a student or as a staff member?
Um, more just the that take away from, because. I think that question's a little bit.
We talked about being gone, a school name or an Oscar event.
Yeah.
It's all against those schools.
It's still a school day, so it would be an exclusive absence, so there wouldn't be any impact for the hours of instruction.
I see. There's no graduating.
He's graduating this year. Actually, the seniors have really been telling me quite often that feel free to call school off as much as you want. Remember graduations are made for.
So Mark, is this near this year's calendar pretty closely?
Last year we had a hundred and seventy-five contact days. Three of the, four of the, or three of those were interim days in August. Hundred seventy-five, we're at a hundred and seventy-four, or a hundred and seventy-five point five and twelve and a half days of in-service. One parent teacher conference day, three holidays paid and a hundred and ninety-two. So, yes, very similar. You know, one of the questions in the survey, I think we had twelve responses from staff in the survey. One of the responses was to is the consideration of changing the number of contract days for teachers as well because they have been adjusted by districts over the years as well. But many of them are very similar to us, we have a hundred and ninety-two days. Three of those are contracted holidays. Districts are within a hundred and eighty-seven to a hundred and ninety-two days.
Mark, how does ACT, ASPIRE, all that, could affect if we moved spring break up instead of back? Earlier?
It depends on when you pick dates. So for us, like, when we order materials for state testing, we need to be in school the week before to get the shipments, to make sure that all the paperwork and all the things are out. Because we did that and we were on spring break trying to make sure that deliveries were made to a building that was closed. So that doesn't work. And then option two, if we have spring break in a different iteration of the calendar that was on the actual testing week, so that didn't work. And like, for the forward exam, we have from the end of March until the end of April to fit that in. And for some grade levels, that's nine days of testing. So we looked at where it would fall and make the most sense. I mean, you can move it all the way up in February and have less impact.
That's what my thought was, curious, just like the last week in February, I was just curious.
Is the twenty-sixth the end of a something?
End of the trimester.
Yeah.
And the state doesn't release the testing dates, like, one comment said, I think you would just pick the week of blank every year.
That's too easy.
Yep, there's some times you see at the end of the second trimester, there's times that it's the fourth week of the third trimester. But they release.
How does spring break usually coincide, Scott, with sporting events at home? What's going on there?
I would say the last couple of years, it's fallen in a, in a spot where not all the spring sports are in effect. You get to the end of March, they're all into play. And then sometimes you get into February, you still have some winter sports finishing up. So usually those first two weeks in March, from that aspect of things, is when things are a little slower, at the, at the high school at least.
Is there any sporting events that happen, like, during this year's spring break?
Um.
Say that's during the break, but nothing here, you're saying?
During this, this year's spring break?
Yeah.
We have tracks started already, not, not events, like practices, those, track starts actually like March seventh, if my dates are correct. And then on the thirteenth, softball starts.
Any other questions, Mark?
What's the feedback been on in-service on Monday versus Friday?
Super positive.
From staff or from families?
I think from hyper.
I asked a lot of students about those, and they all loved the idea.
Of Mondays?
Of Mondays.
Thank you.
That's valuable.
Any other questions? So that'll come to the board next.
Yeah, it'll come to the next meeting unless there's something that you want me to consider for a change or the number of contracted days. We would have to have that discussion, recommend the calendar of different, that would be a change in the employee.
So. I was just looking at summer school dates. The fifth through the twenty-eighth.
Well, actually, it should, shouldn't I leave it for? There are the day service.
Yeah, but I think there's a day break there.
Yeah, I know, but it's, it says summer school June fifth through the twenty-eighth, but on the calendar it shows that would serve for. Right? Starts with that, it's eighteen, eighteen days of summer school. So what's happening on the fourth?
Nothing.
It's not an in-service day or a summer school day?
What we found, what we have is the transition from right first in-service. Having a day or two in between that is very helpful. Also, just everyone getting a day or two off before you start was well received. The June third day is actually listed as a holding in-service day, like we did in the, in the August dates for this calendar year. And then we'd have our, we'd have our eighteen days, which is normal for us for summer days.
Would kids, would kids club open on that fourth or the third?
Kids' club runs throughout June.
I guess if I looked at it as a parent, if I just looked, I would have assumed summer school started on the fourth, even though it says right below it the fifth, so.
Any other thoughts? Next meeting.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, review and approve summer school twenty twenty-three dates. Next on the agenda, review and approve summer school twenty twenty-three dates.
Yes, I believe the recommendation is June sixth and June thirtieth. Recommend approval.
Okay, I'm like, I'm with you. So, this is one where they have the next, I'm here to support.
Thank you. So.
So, what do we have? I mean, what if we have snow days we have to make up?
Uh, right now, we have enough time built into our hours of construction. We don't have to make up any time. Actually, we have enough days in for two days.
We have February and March.
What we would do with, I recommend, I mean, we, we've talked about this. Um, what we've done before is for given more days, we have both support staff and teacher staff, um, do, um, log sheets for those hours. Um, that would be a consideration we would need to make at a future board meeting, as it's not a general item. But in reality, when we look at the days that we have, um, the twenty-sixth is an in-service day this year. Uh, that is our wellness day, so we're not gonna be, we're not gonna be canceled school that day. And then it's Easter Monday, um, or Easter Fri- Good Friday, I guess is what people that practice Easter call it, um, which would be another day. So, the, if we would need to make any more up after this question of the board, it would be at the end of the school year, and we adjust the start of the summer school.
Looking for an approval for summer school dates?
Motion to approve the summer school twenty twenty-three dates.
Motion by Kai says there are second?
Second.
Second by Brooke, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, motion's been approved for our summer school dates from June sixth to June thirty. Next on the agenda is the budget update for twenty-two, twenty-three.
These are monthly budget updates, revenue expenses and, uh, fund balance reports, things we've done. Um, I just wanna highlight a couple of things on the revenue, the top line item for property taxes. You can see that as a, these are through the end of December. As of December, we were, literally, we were doing the property taxes, so, um. And then if you scroll down to sort of the middle of the page, uh, equalization aid. So, it's the three point seven million dollars. Scroll up just a little bit in April. So, we've, we've received three point seven million dollars for savings. That's really what we've been living off of, if you will, since, um, we started for revenue. Um, one of the property taxes is typically, yeah, so we're, we're receiving them now. We receive almost all of them for the January payment. We've got just over one point eight billion dollars this month for. Then we'll get another, um, uh, large amount in February. And then we get our settlements in August after we are in close to the year. So, there's, there's, we're always, um, putting out those taxes receivables for this year that we actually don't get until following this little year. So, so that's where we are with that. Um, and a little bit down from that, you'll see we've received in so far a hundred and ninety-seven thousand in special projects grants. Uh, that amount is mostly S R funds. So, we've done one large distribution from S R three. And the, what we have budgeted is that we will figure that out, all of S R three, hopefully, this year. Um, and that's the fiscal flex that you continue to hear about, because, you know, we don't have basically a million dollars of revenue coming from, um, from S R grants. So, uh, so that's what that is. Um, other than that, I don't have a whole lot to highlight.
Any questions, board? Next, um, the agenda is to review and approve regular open enrollment availability for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yes, we reviewed this at the last committee meeting. Um, this is the chaired, the lies for a draft for regular seats for open enrollment. Uh, recommend approval, um, based on the proposal that is presented to you.
I think it's changed. I'll make the motion to approve.
There's been a motion by Kai says there are second?
Second.
There's been a second by Jeff, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes to approve the open enrollment availability. Next on the agenda is to review and approve special education open enrollment availability for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Jesse, I'll let you speak for this.
Okay, um, yeah, so you, that's, that's okay. If you scroll down to the bottom of it, it's really just the, the seats that we are, you can keep scrolling, yep, uh, to that. Yep, to these, nope, down. Yep. So, really, in each building, I guess we'll just go through the buildings. We are based on staffing needs and kind of all of the other components that I talked about last board meeting. We would be closed at all of those buildings. We would have some availability if somebody came in and the services were just for speech and language. We would have speech and language availability. Um, since we contract out for P T and O T, we would be closed for those.
I do recommend approval of the special education seats.
Board wants to move.
I'll make the motion to approve.
There's been a motion by Kai saying to approve the open enrollment availability for special education, is there a second?
Sorry.
There's been a second by Jeff, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes to approve special education open enrollment availability for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Next on the agenda is to review the second Friday in January people count.
So, the head count was on January, Friday, January fifteenth. Um, we are down head count from fifteen eighty-nine to fifteen seventy-two since September count. Um, that is not quite as impactful, um, financially and funding wise as if we would have been in November, September. But, um, it's certainly something to keep in mind. Are those students, you know, gonna come back or, you know, regain those students again then in fall of this coming school year? Um, so we're now seventeen students and they are at O E S. Um, the net, so we, we've had more withdrawn, but also some come in. So, the net is that we're down nine students at O E S, uh, since September. The net, uh, reduction at O I S is six students. O M S and O H S are both down one each. Okay, so that's the seventeen. Um, and then, uh, April was kind enough of the, kind of, right before we came over here, kind of look at where are those kids going? So, what, what's happening, what, particularly the ones that are leaving? And the majority of them have moved either out of the district or out of the state. So, many of them are, you know, that one, you can just sort of go, okay, that happens. Um, you know, the, the things you might wanna look at or consider would be, you know, when that, when it rolls out. Who knows what that was for, is for parents, transportation, you know, they live near a book in that district or whatever. Um, we've got some that went to a facility and then somehow, uh, returned to the resident district. So, they were attending or living and attending at the moment, um, went back to their, um, resident district. And then we have a handful of ones that have gone homeless. I know that she's out.
Oh, so any more questions, is there a trend to, that, pretty willing to move?
Yeah, mostly, mostly moved out of the district or moved out of the state altogether.
Well, that, can I ask you a question? So, I'm gonna just take O E S, but I know part of it is because of, um, of four K or comment. But if you take the president, perhaps if you get the head count, honestly, I mean, like, if I take the twenty-eighth net go are part of the big seven sector.
Yep.
And then the adjusted head count? I guess why are all those numbers different than the head count of fifteen seventy-two?
We take out the open enrollment.
The ones going, oh, yeah, no.
There is a addition for the open enrollment. Hold on. Adjusted head count adds back in the open enrollment out and takes out the open enrollment in and the mid-student. Cause we get, cause the funding is, it has to, the adjusted head count is, we're then using to calculate the F T for funding. So, because the open enrollment kids are funded outside of that, they have to be, um, taken in for the F T count.
Yeah, I was just wondering why the adjusted, like, maybe the question.
Any other questions about head count?
Thank you. I know there, there's a lot of work that goes into figuring all these numbers, so. Yeah, and, um, April said that, uh, this was the smoothest. January had count, I mean, it's one thing to count students in, in September and figure out, you know, which ones are open enrolled, have I been assessed correctly? Have they actually changed addresses and are not really open enrolled, they're now our residents and all of that. Because sometimes families forget to notify us of those changes, which affects how we count kids. So, it's one thing to do in September, but then when you have kids coming and going, and sometimes they come and go twice in that same time period, and you're looking at all that. But, um, make kudos to the secretaries in April or, um, hopefully they want. Anything else to add, April?
My meeting with Ellen's school lasted five minutes. I saw that to us.
And they're no record type. They're no record.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
So. A special meeting is scheduled for Thursday, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M in the district office conference room. The next committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-three at five P M in the high school L G I. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February eighth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M in the high school L G I.
Can I just throw in a second? I just didn't like to say thank you for all your time in our district. I know this is your last meeting, so thank you for impacting my other district. Thank you.
At this time, we are going to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employees over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise responsibility. Nineteen point eight five one M, consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories discussed in public would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data. District administrator evaluation and individual contracts. I'll entertain a motion, let me. Motion by Brooke, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jeff?
Okay, okay, thank you then.
Throw a call vote, Jan? Brooke? Kai Sa?
Yes.
Jeff and myself is yes. We'll adjourn to executive session.